I could ask everyone in the chamber to please stand. I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmania Aboriginal People as the traditional custodians of the land which we meet tonight, pay respect to elders past and present, and recognise their continuing spiritual commitment to the land. Could you please bow your head in prayer? Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vow safe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the City of Clarence. Amen. I'd like to acknowledge the passing of the Queen. On behalf of my fellow councillors and staff at Clarence City Council, I'd like to join with the rest of Tasmania, Australia and the world in passing on our deepest sympathies and condolences on the passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. We, along with so many others, have long admired the sense of duty and dedication that Her Majesty brought to the role throughout her extraordinary 70 years of reign. Her Majesty was very fond of our state, visiting Tasmania an incredible seven times throughout her reign, and we will forever be honoured by her interest and the wonderful memories of those visits. Her Majesty leaves a legacy that is unrivalled in modern history, a legacy of dependability, adaptability, stoicism and dignity that will be an inspiration for many generations to come. May she rest in peace. Thank you. I'd like to remind all present that this meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is said in the meeting is not protected by privilege. There is a link to the agenda papers on the council's website. Thank you. I note that we have all present Alderman von Berto and Alderman Ewington online, and we have one vacancy with Luke Edmonds being elected to the Legislative Council at the recent elections, and that automatically meant vacancy which will be filled within forthcoming elections. Are there any declarations of interest of councillors or close associate? Thank you. I'd like to deal with item four, which are a number of items there, and we'll deal with them one by one. First of all, 4.1, the confirmation of minutes on the 5th of September as circulated, be taken as read and confirmed.
4.2, this is me, Communications. I'd like to table a list of meetings and attendances by myself and the Deputy Mayor. One of those was a visit to the Harrow Primary School where we were, myself and Alderman Ewington, were briefed by Year 6 WK. They were very interested in the workings of local government, and it was part of their overall programme to understand governments better throughout the country and democracy. It was a very interesting and enlightening session. They did take the opportunity to table three, or write to me with three letters concerning a desire to see a pontoon of Little Harrow Beach, and I'd like to table those three letters. Thank you.
John, just a question.
Councillor Mulder.
On the, your meetings, the 6th of September, in your meeting attendances, there's a private citizenship ceremony. Could you just expand on what that was?
Certainly, council would be aware of the fact that I hold a number of citizenship ceremonies each year. They're large events usually, held at Blunston Arena. At the last one we held, one of the people who was meant to be bestowed with citizenship or given the opportunity to say the oath was late, and so I undertook to hold it privately in my office at a subsequent date. 4.3, council notes the agenda briefing on the 23rd of September. Tabling of petitions, I believe that Alderman Ewington would like to speak to one, that he has already passed the General Manager, but he wants to table in absence.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, obviously it's an issue that feels had a bit to do with in the last few weeks. You know, a local mother was asked us to address the access to Little Harrow Beach for her daughter who's in a wheelchair, and we've known for a long time that that area needed to be addressed, and I think there's widespread community support to look at improving, you know, short-term access to the beach to give everyone the opportunity to access the beach, and then while we work through the master planning process, and I know that the GM has been working behind the scenes to find a solution for this problem, and yeah, that's great to, so that we'll move pretty quickly to make it all happen, and I hope that we can find a solution so that not only Bridget's daughter Rosie, but also other community members are able to get access and, you know, improve the health and wellbeing through doing the things that a lot of us take for granted in terms of accessing the beaches, and I know there's some other plans for Belle Reve Beach and other areas which I think would be great to see that happen as part of our active living strategy and also the disability and access policies that were pretty important. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Ewington. Are there any other petitions, please, from the floor? Thank you. 4.5, reports from outside bodies, there's no reports pending from the single joint authorities. Reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, are there any of those? Councillor Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I table the minutes of the 17th of August, and thank Alderman Pearce for chairing while I was away?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to table the minutes of the Belle Reve Community Arts Centre meeting for the 14th of September. Thank you.
There being no more reports. Moving on to item 4.6, that the information contained in the weekly briefing reports of 5th, 12th and 19th of September be noted. Alderman James?
I've moved that at the same time, like to speak to that item.
Well, we'll deal with it as part of the omnibus motion, but if you'd like to move the omnibus motion, we can then speak to that item.
Indeed, and I'm more than happy to do so, but I would like to raise a matter in the weekly briefing report of the 12th of September.
Okay, do I have a second for the omnibus motion? Thank you, Alderman Pearce. Please speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I refer to the 12th of September, upcoming works on Cambridge Road and Percy Street, Belle Reve. Mr. Mayor, we've received a communication relation to the works that are going to be undertaken there, and the question has arisen as to why there is a need to close Kangaroo Bay Car Park for these works to continue in conjunction with Taz Water. And my question through you too, Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, why is it necessary for the rear car park, Kangaroo Bay Car Park, to be closed? This is at the rear of the pharmacy which has been closed since, I think, March of this year. And given that works will commence on about the time that they're going to recommence working hours, Mr. Mayor, it seems as though that is there possible for the car park to remain open so that the pharmacy in Cambridge Road, which has been closed, as I mentioned now, for almost nine months, that that, those works should not start with the closure of the car park, and is there some other means by which we could assist the pharmacy in being able to open and not necessarily have it as another problem with their, with their opening hours as I've experienced over the last few months?
Thanks, Alderman James, Mr. Graham.
Uh, three.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe the briefing report talks about it at all in terms of the Percy Street works closing the car park. When team for works to be undertaken at night, we haven't determined whether where the compound side is or closing the car park on this actual stop of the works.
So you were able to set up an updated briefing once that information comes to hand?
Sure we can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Did anyone else wish to speak to any of those items before I put the motion? Thank you. We accept the officer's recommendation on all those omnibus items, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Moving on to item five, public question time, there are no matters on notice. The answer to the question previously taken on notice will take as read. Questions without notice, are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Okay, so moving on to item six, deputations by members of the public. I believe we have one, General Manager. Lauren Booth.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one deputation tonight from Ms. Lauren Booth in relation to DA for 18 Lowland Court in Gilston Bay.
I take it you're standing in for Lauren?
Yes.
No, that's fine. Couple of things, first of all, if you could state your name and address please before mentioning, but also under meeting regs, I can only offer you three minutes, and there'll be a warning tone at two and a half minutes.
My name's Tom Fazakli, I'm from Seven Blossom Crescent in Cambridge. We're here to speak about our proposed development for multiple dwellings at Lowland Court in Gilston Bay. Most of all, most of you will be aware of our situation, as we've previously brought this to your attention via email on the 15th of September, so we'll try and make your deputation as quick as possible. We'd like to thank Alderman Richard James for meeting us on site last Monday. His view on the proposal seemed positive, and we thank him for his advice moving forward. We've been working on this development with our draftsman for around 10 months now, getting everything prepared up to this stage. We would like to please ask that these two units be considered for sure. In the opinion of our draftsman and ourselves, we believe that the recommendation for refusal is based on minor detail, especially if no objections have been made. We'd also like to add that the sun shading over the adjacent property is vacant, and adjacent to that is also another vacant property. The units are situated where they are to comply with our recent Bow assessments and flood reports. The flood reports require the draftsman to design slightly higher unit, which will obviously result in a little bit more shading. The other issue was access to the personal space. We would be agreeable to changing to a two-bedroom unit if after tonight this is still considered a big issue. We would like to also just take this time to stress that the planner was seen to be happy for this to be sent out to advertising regardless of the concern they had for the sun shading. More importantly, we also want you to be aware that not one single objection was made from any member of the public. We believe the application was never to be accepted, that it should in fact never have been advertised, as if denied now we are potentially months behind on moving forward. Thank you again for your time, Mayor. We are eager to see each and everyone's response on this other issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I now advise council intends to send the planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. First item on the agenda 7.1 is a development application at Seven Buchanan Street, Belle Reve, for additions and alterations to a dwelling. I'll move in a second please. Thanks, Alderman Pearce, Councillor Kendi, thank you. Alderman Pearce.
Thank you, Mayor. I went and had a look at the site, like I did with all these on the agenda, and look, I think it's fairly straightforward, I don't see any big issue with it. To me, it looks fine, I mean, I think that area there, I think, you know, it's a beautiful area, and I see nothing wrong with them wanting to add additions.
Thank you, Councillor Kendi.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What concerns me in relation to this particular development is the number of shadow diagrams that appear in the agenda, and it seems as though that if you look at the existing dwelling and then compare it with the proposed, you'll note that number nine Buchanan is in fact on almost every occasion is receiving or experiencing loss of sunlight in relation to the proposed development. The question I have here in relation to this, and I'd like to pose that to Mr. Lovell in his capacity as city planner, Mr. Lovell, on these diagrams that are quite extensive, and they number at least five or six pages, and they all have identified number nine Buchanan as experiencing loss of sunlight and as part of the overshadowing. Can you advise as to whether or not at any time during the winter solstice that they will be overshadowed for the extent of at least three hours?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The original plans had a significant effect, but the amended plans that we're proposing in our recommendation would be adopted, provide more than three hours sunlight to nine Buchanan Street during the day onwards to solstice.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Any other speakers? Prior to reply? So the recommendations of approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Item 7.2 is a development application at 18 Lowland Court, Gilston Bay, to multiple dwellings. Thank you, Alderman Blommy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to, particularly indulged with the Chair in the meeting, to move an alternate motion that hasn't yet been circulated to colleagues, a motion for approval, and just wondering, with subject to conditions and advice, having had a very brief conversation with Mr. Lovell this evening, as the, as Mr. Fazakli presenting the deputation earlier tonight touched on, Alderman James, myself had to have had contact with the parties, but we both thought that the other was taking care of business, and we've been rather engaged with other issues, so I'm just wondering whether we can have this circulated to colleagues to come back with this approval motion to address later this evening?
I don't think it's reasonable for us to take that without having it previously circulated, Alderman Blommy.
Sure, as I apologised, Mr. Mayor, I assumed, as did Alderman James, that it had been taken care of by somebody else.
I think in the interest of due process that we all should have the opportunity to be able to have a look at it. If the motion as recommended is lost, and you've foreshadowed another one, then that will force us into another procedural loop.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yep. So, do I have someone to propose the recommendation? So, Mr. Pearce. Do I have a second there, please? Well, if there's no, second of the motion lapses, I guess we have no option but. Alderman Walker, you seconded?
Hand rights, yeah.
Okay, so we've moved Councillor Mulder, seconded Councillor Walker. Councillor Mulder?
I would like to, with a procedural motion, that this matter be deferred to a later part in the evening, which would allow then time for Alderman Blommy's alternative to be circulated.
I've seconded, oh, procedure motion, sorry.
That's a procedural motion, I'd take it that, is that the one that you're intending to move, Councillor Walker, or not? Otherwise, I'll take Alderman Blommy's.
I think you should take Alderman Blommy's, this is.
Okay, so we have a procedural motion that would be deferred until later, during which time I would expect to see the motion circulated, and if necessary, we can adjourn and come back to it. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried, so I propose to deal with this prior to going into closed session, so we'll adjourn the planning session at this stage for that purpose by the will of council. In the meantime, if it is possible to have the alternate motion circulated with professional comment on it, that would be very much appreciated. All right, moving on to item 7.3, it's a development application at 19 Scott Street, Belle Reve, for demolition of existing dwelling and construction of three multiple dwellings, pardon me. Could I have a move in a second, please? Okay, we can defer this one too, if everyone's happy for that. Thanks, Alderman Pearce, seconded, Councillor Kendi, thank you, Alderman Pearce.
Mayor, look, again, I went and had a look at this, the building, it's not heritage listed, even though it's a beautiful place, it's not for me to judge. They want to knock it down, demolish it and put three multiple dwellings on it, to me that's up to the applicant, and as I say, I'll support it.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman James?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a very interesting proposal because it's actually within the precinct of the Belle Reve Bluff precinct, and it has the neighbourhood character and urban design framework study, which Mr. Lee Woolley made and contributed to actually the Belle Reve Bluff being listed as part of our planning scheme. So that this dwelling is really in keeping the existing dwelling at 19 Scott Street is really in keeping with the area, and even Mr. Woolley, Lee Woolley describes, and I quote, "The back beach precinct, which includes Scott Street, is freestanding buildings of varying age, street-facing, but set back from the street edge, identify the precinct. Generally, the pattern is of a single-storey buildings, slightly elevated above gently sloping sites." Mr. Woolley also says, "With respect to housing stock from the 40s, 50s and 60s, typically building stock from these periods is not yet heritage listed and will continue to be subject to redevelopment or loss." So, the expert has really come out and identified that this is within the Belle Reve Bluff precinct, and has the neighbourhood character of what are other buildings in close proximity to it. As you know from our briefing papers, Mr. Mayor, there has been a comment with regard to heritage-listed buildings that actually are in the very close proximity to this development, but it hasn't been listed, but nevertheless, I believe that Mr. Woolley's assessment, even though it's 2016, but it has been incorporated within the planning scheme to describe the Belle Reve Bluff as a special area, even though it does incorporate many of those buildings from the 40s, 50s and 60s, but it maintains the character of that area. I do not believe this is appropriate development. If it was a single-storey development, then in keeping with the streetscape and other particular issues that are a part and parcel of the Belle Reve Bluff precinct, then I think it would be a better development, but in this particular case, as we all know, it's demolition of the existing building and construction of three multiple dwellings, which I believe is out of kilter with the amenity and the streetscape of the area. I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you. A rider reply, Alderman Pearce?
Look, I do have some sense for what Alderman James said, I looked at the place myself, and I thought, jeez, it's a beautiful place, but as I said, it's up to the developer, and I mean, it does comply, we've had three objections, but as I said, the place is not heritage listed, and the developer wants to take a different line, and look, everything there is good, so I support the recommendation.
Thank you. So the recommendation for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those in favour? Against? The motion is carried, I now adjourn our business as a planning officer. Moving on to item 8.1, it's determination of petition for pass road upgrade, the recommend- Alderman Blommy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move the recommendation.
Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Councillor Chong. Alderman Blommy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a community This was a community lead petition, led largely by a concerned resident of Gleep Hill, Mr. Mark Kempster, who in a very short period of time was able to gain 287 signatures on this community petition. This is probably the best outcome we could expect for at this time. And we'd all agree that Pass Road is, as the report acknowledges, in a postulated repair. Some of the potholes there, there's a lady I met with today at Gleep Hill Village, Mr. Mayor, who said that she has a sports car and she's afraid of losing her car in the potholes at that large. So she doesn't drive down Pass Road at all. It's pretty ordinary. I know that some cyclists also have similar concerns as well. But I've also had discussions with developers along Pass Road as well, Mr. Mayor, and they, like the community, are very keen to see this road upgraded. Everyone wins when that happens. And clearly, you know, if we were talking about the gold-plated solution, we push you all the way through the Tasman Highway, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. What we need to do obviously is widen this road and to ensure it's in a good state of repair. And also some lighting as well and pedestrian. Yeah, some nice footpaths there. So the request of the traffic commissioner to reduce existing 80 kilometres per hour to 60 Ks is reasonable in the circumstances that we're dealing with a pretty shoddy road. It's a gut strike, as I've described it before. It needs a lot of love, it needs a big investment. And it's good to see that we are moving in that direction. So we note that there's $1.4 million funds available for the Pass Road reconstruction. We know it's going to cost a great deal more than that. We allocated one and a half million in our 2021 annual estimates as the initial staging for the reconstruction of Pass Road. We also know that land acquisition will be required as well to get the result that we want. But, Mr. Mayor, I think that this cannot happen soon enough. You know, I know the design is well underway from reconstruction of Pass Road from Gleep Hill Road to Conner Place. That's excellent. But like a lot of things, it's good to have things in the design stage. Let's get it to the delivery stage. And that's really what the people of that part of our city are calling out for. I'm sure it's something that we all support as well. So it's with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, that I'm very happy tonight to support the recommendation. Is it ideal? No, it's not. Or do I want it a lot more? Yes, I would have, but it's a step in the right direction. I congratulate the GM and his team on the recommendation for us this evening.
Thank you, councillor John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will repeat all the things that my colleague has just said, but I will say I'm particularly keen to have the speed limit reduced. It's quite hard to go 80 Ks along that road anyway, but I think it makes sense until we can get all the work done to have it at 60. I think that shows that we're taking the state of the road into account and hopefully other people will too. So I seek my colleague's support.
Alderman James? I also support the recommendation, but I'm a little bit concerned as to what the design and cost estimates in relation to the actual staging, future workshop and staging. Is the Mr. Graham in a position to sort of give us a... And I know it's a big ask, Mr. Mayor, but provide us with a ballpark figure on this future staging and what we may, as a, well, a new council, would have to consider in relation to funding, please. Mr. Graham?
Through, Mr. Mayor, no, I'm not in a position to advise at this stage.
Okay. Other speakers? Councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the history with this does go back a fair way. And I recall on the thirteenth of July, 2020, I submitted, I received a response to an elected member's request and in which the information provided at that time was that the reconstruction had been funded in the 1920 budget and that they were using carryover funding and it was then in budget with that carryover funding for 2021. So the new subdivision, and it was about the reconstruction from the newly finished subdivision to Conner Place, which is the section we're talking about now. So that's been entrained for many years now and for several years. So the Gleep Hill sections were being done by the developer, were supposed to be, were going to be done and have now been done by the developer with the developer's fund or with, by the developer or with the developer's funding. So the thing is that the idea that somehow it is ever going to be feasible or that the federal government, who controlled Tasman Highway, would ever think about extending Pass Road to meet the Tasman Highway at a point, one kilometre, within one kilometre of where there is a major interchange already on that highway, to encourage vehicles to use a minor road to avoid using a major highway. It's not going to happen and it's not, it's a question of it's not ideal. It is simply unfeasible, impractical and would be a huge cost. And what sort of a connection off the end of Pass Road would you make? You'd be demolishing houses, you would be going up steep hills, you would be doing all sorts of things. So I think it's not a question of it not being ideal. It's a question of not going and raising community expectations that these things are feasible. And I've been criticised for being so negative about these things, yet it's not negative to be practical. It's not negative to be up there and saying, this is not can be done. Now, Pass Road should have been done years ago and I can tell you now to my horror, when I did the walk the other day, lo and behold, there's a huge pothole right within the roundabout that has basically been recently constructed to standard. Now, that has to be ringing alarm bells about what is going to be involved in the reconstruction of the remainder of that road because it's an old creek bed, it's the old coach road. It clearly isn't draining properly. So I think we're going to have to need to dig it out, build it up, put proper drainage on each side and not just clean out the gutters. Because as we see, if we just dig it up, roll a bit of gravel over it and plonk it down again, even the new sections are now getting rainfall. And for those who are talking about climate change, this is, these are just evidence. These increasing rain severity events are going to make this matter increasingly worse. And I'm quite sure that that is why the road is in the state that it's in because we've had so much rain and it's got nowhere to go and the water table comes up and it lifts the pavement. And when it lifts the pavement, a truck rolls over it and away we go. So I'm all for the speed limit reduction. I asked a question at the briefing session on Friday, to which I haven't got a response yet. I think it would be also very appropriate, given the spongy nature of the road and its base, that maybe we need to be putting load limits on it in order to avoid those big trucks. And that, a lot of that's increased because the Gleep Hill Shopping Centre, and I saw it the other day, the big heavy trucks servicing that supermarket are using Pass Road on their exit strategy. So that would certainly be compounding the difficulties that we have. I wholeheartedly agree. I wish we'd started yesterday, but I seriously question whether simply chopping it up, laying some gravel over it and patting it down again is going to achieve what we need to do. We need a modern road constructed with proper drainage and elevated.
Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think Alderman Mulder is quite right there. I don't think in my time on council, I've seen a road deteriorate like this one has. And I know we've had heaps of rain and you're quite right. The drainage is not suitable now for the amount of rain we're having. And I drove along there today and I agree with you. I've seen some of the biggest potholes I think I've seen in a lot of roads and they're huge. And because they're huge, they're dangerous. They really are. I had a rate payer tell me about a week ago, and this was at the other end, the Cambridge Road end, where he hit a pothole and blew his tyre. So, you know, things like this, we've got to start doing something on that road. I mean, I'd rather just see the potholes filled at the moment because they're huge, they're dangerous. So as I say, I certainly support this motion and maybe the reduction in the speed limit will help, but I think anything will help at the moment, so I'll support this recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Councillor Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pass Road seems a hardly apt name. I think it's been voluntarily foul-ruled for some time. I can certainly understand the frustrations and how they're building with a road that is experiencing increased traffic, is deteriorating and an area that's been under a lot of change. It doesn't seem that long ago that, I remember one of the aldermen around this table were fixing a big sign lobbying for lights at the top of Pass Road to intersect with the South Arm Highway. And we've gone well past that now. It's hard to believe that they ever weren't there. One of the things that I, you know, feel we did do very well was through the COVID crisis when there was some budget challenges. We did manage to sort of make ends meet. And I think it's really important that councils do that, that they get in enough revenue to cover their expenses, be that, you know, dog rangers, street cleaning, street lights, all the things that we do. But one shouldn't confuse that with sensible borrowing, something that I've been talking about for a while. An upgrade to Pass Road is an upgrade to a piece of infrastructure that we would enjoy the benefits of improving today and that would be enjoyed by future users of that road. And it is perfectly reasonable for future users to be paying in the form of some interest for that, for that benefit there. I don't think it should be all on everyone right now to be fixing something and expecting that to be paying for the whole long term. And just while we're on that, if we don't start being a bit more sensible with our balance sheet and again, using it carefully for infrastructure that is of a long-term benefit, then guess what? We're going to be just another Taz Water 2.0 where someone will look at Clarence's balance sheet and see that as the saviour for surrounding councils that need a hand. So I think it's really appropriate that we start being honest and upfront about where it's appropriate to borrow. It's not appropriate to borrow to cover your day-to-day services and costs, but it's entirely appropriate to borrow for infrastructure. When we look at the site too, there are some perverse incentives around developer contributions and developer contributions are appropriate. You might say you support business and you don't think they should be there. That's a way of basically saying you don't support rate payers and you think they should be footing the bill for something when there is a shared benefit. It's a contribution, it's not the whole, it's not the full whack. It's a contribution. But there are perverse incentives. And you want to see the best example of those perverse incentives? Wind the clock back a year or two and take a drive along Oceana Drive. You'll have to stop because it came to a dead end. There was an interlude of a couple of hundred metres and then the road started again. And the whole issue around that thing which drove locals and people from further away, you know, it's saying was the fact that it was around the way the system is structured so that if a piece of infrastructure is built, then you can't really come and collect a contribution when surrounding land is developed. And I think we need to be upfront about that and maybe we need to use some provisions. And there are provisions for special ratings on new blocks, but that would actually be, that would actually be on the new rate payer for the block. And maybe if we're more upfront about having a conversation with that, some developers that say this infrastructure is needed but sit on the sidelines hoping it will happen and they won't need to play their small contribution would come to the party. But there is a way forward and it does matter because we've talked about the increased, you know, water pressures, et cetera. I can remember some howls in the 80s that it was actually effectively a lake in parts of that road. And that was in a time when it was largely low-density sort of surrounding households, but now the pressure's really stepped up. So let's actually start building infrastructure for tomorrow today and it's okay that tomorrow pays for part of the infrastructure that they're getting to use as well. So I support the recommendations, but I also support an open and upfront conversation with people about sensibly borrowing to build the infrastructure we need.
Thanks, councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I too support the recommendation to note the petition and we did have some discussion at the briefing on Friday and I just want to clarify a couple of points. I believe there was some information provided to the community that potholes would be fixed every couple of weeks and that the whole road had been thundered or had been put in the budget. And I know this says it's just that section and it's just 23, 24 budget. And of course, that will be a decision for the new council. But can I just clarify through you, Mayor, to Mr. Graham, that point about the pothole maintenance in the meantime?
Mr. Graham?
Through, Mr. Mayor. Our crew are attending regularly. It's not specifically every two weeks, but I have been advised by the manager of operations they're driving the road regularly to check for potholes and then giving them a priority to be repaired.
Okay. Any other speakers? Councillor Kendy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was really going to say what councillor Warren has just mentioned. I think we've steered away a little bit from the recommendation that's before us, but I would take some comfort in thinking that we may be able to do some interim work to just fill those potholes until the next rain comes, I guess, and washes it out. But if we could be seen to be doing something there at this point in time, that would be great. But yeah, I think we've moved away a little bit from the recommendation, which I do support.
Thank you. Are there other speakers?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Alderman Yarington?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, I have to agree with 97% of what's been said tonight. I don't know why we need to throw the climate change thing in there. It's got nothing to do with climate change, about the growth of the city and the growth of the area. And I mean, really, I think the important thing here that we need to remember is that, yeah, I think we definitely need to borrow a bit of money to do some of these major infrastructure projects as suggested by Alderman Walker. But the other thing that we need to do, and it goes back to something I've been talking about a lot of time, is have the courage to get back to basics on some of these issues, which means that, yeah, we should fast-track this project to make it happen. But that's going to take some courage from the next council to actually look at some of the things that aren't core businesses and actually look at actually, you know, maybe cutting a few things so that we can actually spend the money and have things happen a little bit faster in some of these infrastructure projects. But certainly support the need to do some work on Pass Road. But, you know, it's all I have to say, that we're going to find the money for that. We also need to look at, get back to what we really need to concentrate on and that is to make things happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Blomby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it really just goes back to the point that I raised in my opening comments, that is just to thank Mark Kempster and the people, the community members, who contacted, reached out to me to get this petition underway. Within a week, 287 signatures is a fantastic, fantastic result. And as a result of that, we're now getting some action on this road. And as mentioned earlier tonight, this has been ongoing now for a number of years. We as a council knew, we're aware, in the next five years, you have 20,000 people in the Clarence Plains area. It's going to be significant. That road needs to be, you know, up to an appropriate level. And this is a step in the right direction. Hopefully, we'll get there sooner rather than later. But I thank colleagues for the contributions.
So the motion before the Chair is that we note the petition and that work, design work is underway and a request has gone through for 60 kilometres an hour. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, eight point four point one, which is under governance. It concerns the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Hospitality School. The proposal is that the GM be authorised to take any action necessary. Councillor Mulder?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second up? Thank you. Councillor Warren? Councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very political issue, Kangaroo Bay, but this is not the time to debate the merits of this proposal or otherwise. We are nearing a very critical date, but between now and which there will be no council meetings to discuss any developments. Neither is the time to speculate on what might be coming next or not. Neither is the time to be now trying to work out what we would do if scenario A, B, C or D or anything else was to come up. So all we need, as we say, this is a critical date. We do not need to say, and we must be very careful not to do or say anything, that puts council in a position where it doesn't want to be because of the very delicate legal negotiations that are coming before us. All this motion does is empower the general manager to take action to protect council's legal positions and, as I say, in the case of any number of scenarios and, and, and as I say, in a, in a case of any number of scenarios that we simply will not have time to debate. I have little doubt that the critical deadline is, it will be an issue because, as I said, there will be no council meetings and we really do need to empower the general manager to take any actions that is necessary. And I might say that a general manager would be extremely brave if he made any major decisions without at least consulting the fellow councillors. So I, I, I just, I would recommend that, I, I really say that I think this should be a speedy motion without, with limited amount of debate, given the political climate.
Thank you, councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Mulder, who has basically summed up the issue better than I could have. And I also urge my colleagues to restrict their comments to whether or not we give the general manager delegation to best protect the rights of the citizens of Clarence, which is what this motion is about. And to be very careful that we don't jeopardise that in any way by being indiscreet with our comments this evening. It's certainly not a place for politicking. So I do urge colleagues to support this motion, to give the general manager the power to protect our rights to the full extent, safe in the knowledge that he's not going to make a decision on our behalf. He's just going to make sure that we are protected and I fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The, what the officers have, have actually covered on page 131 of the officer's report spells out a really important point with regard to the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993 and of course, the Clarence Plan interim planning scheme at the time of 2015. But there is a distinct difference between this inasmuch as why the general manager needs to be able to protect the rights. And I can see, Mr Mayor, how you were looking toward at me as far as where I'm heading in this regard. And it's because of the nature of the sale and development agreement, which is quite different to any development application. And so already there has been at least three extensions that this council has provided. And also, one of our members in this place has in fact, wants to have council buy the land back. That was obviously in the, in the paper recently. However, that seems to be a monumental backflip on that person's part because all that time over the years, he's always been in support of this particular development in his current form.
Alderman James, I do assume you want to make this a political issue?
Yeah, I'm not, not trying to do that at all. It was just in the media recently and the buyback was actually mentioned. So I don't really want to go into that, other than to say that the agreement that has been in place here is an important one and we have granted at least three extensions at time. And in 2017, I didn't support this particular development, certain development agreement. But as you know, Mr Mayor, back in 2000, when we were dealing with the Kangaroo Bay precinct and had the special zoning that we put into place, that I supported that change. And I've always been in support of a small-scale development hotel in that area. So having said that, it's important that the general manager, part B of this particular process has not the substantial commencement. And we know what that is. And that's also covered within the officer's report. And substantial commencement, and I quote, requires Shambrood to commence construction of footings, foundations and other ground level and below ground level infrastructure relating to buildings approved by the development permit within the timeframe as set by the agreement. So therefore, we, and I am in support of the question, and in particular in part B, because I know the general manager will uphold council's determination in relation to this. And I'd be very, very disappointed if we did receive, Mr Mayor, prior to the 14th of October, a further extension of time.
Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'll lead off by saying that I fully support the opening comments by both the mover and the seconder. And that is regarding the delicate legal position that we're currently in. And that's been the case based on legal advice we have received for the past couple of extensions this council has granted. So to be very clear, Mr Mayor, this is in response to the previous speaker. There's been no backflip on my case at all, in my situation at all on this. This was a deal editing to by the previous council in May 2017. My public comments all the way along have been, I would never have signed that deal. And that remains my position today. Based on legal advice though, as the mover and the seconder pointed out, it's important that we act responsibly as directors of this organisation to protect the rate payers of this great city. And that's why based on legal advice, in my view, we had no option but to accept the legal advice and to grant the extension sought at that particular time. In my view, and of course, there'll be legal advice that'll be provided to us. And I appreciate fully that this is a delicate legal position. And for those that claim they don't want to politicise it, my goodness, Mr Mayor. You know, Mr Mayor, I wasn't here in 2017 and I would not have supported the deal then. I don't support it now. However, based on that, I do support the general manager being empowered to take all actions necessary. I pick up on the points made by previous speakers that like them, I have every confidence in decisions we made in the best interests of this city. And that's what we're all here to be doing, make decisions in the best interests of this city. But post this election, within the next six month period, we need to make a decision. And I look forward to the opportunity this council making the right decision when that position arrives.
Thanks, Alderman Blomley. Other speakers? Alderman Ewington?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, seeing I won't have an opportunity to be involved in the decision-making process in the next council, I might have my two bobs now. Look, you know, it, it's been an unfortunate situation for me, you know. Just bear with me, Mr Mayor, let me just.
So, so long as you stay to the issue at hand, Alderman Ewington, and don't.
I agree, okay, I agree with the GM being empowered to protect the interests of the council in relation to the buyback clause. I think that's a sensible approach for us to take at the moment. And I think that, you know, you know, it's been a very complex legal situation, unfortunate in relation to some of the delays that have happened and none of us have wanted to see that. But I will take this opportunity so that hopefully in the future, regardless of whether the council buys it back or not, or whatever changes, I look forward to seeing a hotel down on that low coast and then we fulfil our dream of, or not our dream, but our plan to turn that into a, you know, a real hub for the upper end of the hotel area, market, restaurant, cafe and those sort of things that really contribute to the night time economy in current. So hopefully that's the outcome that we look for. But in the short term, I think this is a prudent approach to deal with what is an unfortunate situation for all of us being kept in at the moment. But we'll see what happens in the next few weeks and months.
Thank you. Other speakers? Councillor Walker?
Look, I commend the report as tabled and generated by the general manager. We are all, I would hope, looking for a optimal resolution for the citizens and residents of the Clarence area. And I'd ask people to reflect on how that might best be achieved. And I think a good faith approach is generally the best way. I could go on a bit more, but I'll just wrap up with a pithy comment. I know that people in plenty of Slavic countries last century had a saying that the future is certain, but the past is forever being changed.
Okay, look, I'm just going to break the debate for a moment here and note that we've got item 7.2 coming up. And I'm just wondering if it's possible, have we got anything to circulate yet or what's the situation here? Could we please circulate that?
Thank you, Mayor. And I've also circulated the alternative motion to Alderman Ewington and Alderman Von Berta electronically about a minute ago.
Okay. If everyone's got a copy of that, we will pause before we move to it, but I think we need to distribution out of the way right now. And if we could resume the debate, if anyone on the previous item, I do note that there's still a couple of other possible speakers. In that case, write a reply, councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And some of the debate that has occurred here has gone beyond the parameters of what the motion's about. And unfortunately, we've introduced that. And what we, what that debate is about, about speculating what might happen if we got a request for an extension. The buyback and all those other things are predominant. And I did ask people not to speculate about because there are, we don't know what the next move is going to be. We do know that it's in the Shambrood Court. We don't know if a request would be made. If we did know, we don't know what the reasons for that extension might be. They might be so compelling that we have an elect to stand on and have to grant it. So all this speculation about what may or may not is really not what we're doing here now. And, and for, you know, and, and for people rewriting history, I would suggest that a quick look at the media commentary would suggest that what we're being told isn't quite accurate. But that's beside the point we were supposed to be debating. The point we were debating, and I'll reiterate it again, is that we need to empower the general manager to protect council's position in some delegate, delicate legal decisions that are coming up. The future or otherwise of the site is something for us to discover after the critical date has passed.
Thank you. All those in favour? I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item, I've got councillor's question time, there's no matters on notice. We'll take. I will when I complete the question time. We'll move to item 10.3. The answers to questions at the previous council meeting, we'll take those as read. Questions without knows, can I start with you, councillor Mulder?
Apology accepted, Mr Mayor. The, my question is, is quite a basic one and I think it's a matter that you are well aware of, following a discussion with a, with a constituent the other day, which we were both present in, which you, I think the word bitchman may have been misunderstood. My question though relates to the issue at Pass Road and several other places in the city where residents have requested speed humps. But there doesn't, I'm not aware of what sort of policy or are there any road rules or design standards about suggesting where speed humps would or wouldn't be very suitable. So my question particularly is, what are the policy parameters for deciding whether or not to use speed humps as a traffic calming measure?
Mr Graham?
Through, Mr Mayor, I'll provide that through a brief and tour of the alderman in terms of the warrants for recommending speed humps on, on roads.
And that would include a policy document in terms of where and when they can be used?
Well, initially I'll just provide the warrants in terms of what, from the Australian standards, when speed humps are recommended. And then we can further think about whether council specifically needs a, a policy in terms of that matter.
Thank you. Councillor Ken?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think many of us have received or continue to receive communication from Pivlin, Acton Park, Crumorne, Seven Mile Beach about the amount of water that continues to lie in those areas. And this is even when there is no rain, it just doesn't go away, doesn't. So I'll get to the question. It has nowhere to go. I believe just from social media posts that one of our engineers were, had visited the region of Seven Mile Beach in particular in the last week or so. And if that's happened, that is great. But there is, I guess, questions from the community as to when they're going to find out what the answers were to those visitations. But first of all, I guess my question to Mr Graham, has someone visited to actually check out the water that continues to lie in people's lounge rooms as well as on the roads?
Through, Mr Mayor, I can't answer. I mean, I went to Crumorne on Friday, I'm going to Seven Mile Beach on Thursday. I'm not too sure on other staff in terms of their movements and specting certain areas. Specifically in terms of Seven Mile Beach, we've received the draft Bill Cromer latest information. This needs to be modified just a little bit. And then we'll make that public on our website. And council staff are also looking with our environmental health officers in terms of coming back to councillors that how we can look at the next stage of monitoring specifically for Seven Mile Beach. The Acton, Crumorne, Seven Mile Beach are all very flat areas and require absorption of, through the ground, of the groundwater. And it's, it's taking time. But we are trying to address them or come back to Alderman specifically on the Seven Mile Beach area.
Thank you. And so can I just ask, we are reviewing the monitoring, is it?
Yes, that, that's right. And we'll come back to council in terms of what we recommend for the future. And it's highly likely probably we'll need some budget items for the following financial year to expand the monitoring that we've got there at the moment.
Thank you, Mr Graham.
Councillor Walker? Alderman Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, since Mr Graham said he'd been to Crumorne and I was going to raise Crumorne, the road by the sea there is the worst I've seen it now. You've been down there, is anything going to be done with that road? And I think we don't own it, do we? Pipe clay esplanade, I mean, it's the worst, it's the worst I've ever seen it. And I mean, I'm just wondering if we can do something to it.
Mr Graham?
Through, Mr Mayor, I, I drove out on Friday and yeah, saw some, some potholes. They weren't deep, but I saw a number of potholes through there. I have some information from the manager of operations, I have a number of letters to advise to residents. And when I'm answering those, I'll inform, provide copies to Alderman to understand where we are in terms of the next reshooting of pipe clay esplanade. And the long-term aim is still to wait for the local coastal management plan to come back to council so we can consider how to manage that road in the future.
Mayor, my question was, is anything going to be done? Because as I said, it's the worst I've seen it. Now, I'm not saying we have to reshoot it and all this, but you know, it's dangerous. And I'm just going, wonder we're going to do anything?
Alderman Blomley?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. And these two questions probably more appropriately being Alderman's request, but we'll ask them this evening because I was called when I was on my way here this evening. The first one is through, Mr Mayor, again to, to Mr Graham, I assume. The council land beside Glebe Hill Village, that when we went there for the opening, it was all nicely mown and very clean. Now, it's not nicely mown, it's not, it's not very clean. There's lots of rubbish there as well. Across the road, that's been cleaned up recently, I understand by our crews. I'm just hoping that we might be able to have that addressed in the near future, please.
Mr Graham, can you assure that that'll be brought into our normal work plan?
Certainly can. It depends exactly which road we're talking about. And some roads aren't being managed by us at the moment, they're still with the developer for 12 months. So it depends just which piece of land we're talking about. But I can liaise with Alderman Blomley and checking exactly which, which road it is or which area.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My second question, it's a bit of a recurring theme this evening, is regarding 13 units at 34 Clinton Road, Gilston Bay. And there's been flooding events there for the last, I'm told there's been three or four flooding events over the last two to three years that's occurred there for a number of unit owners. There's a report apparently that council commissioned, that hasn't been made available. Well, first of all, I need to ask, as, as a report being commissioned, if it has that able to be made publicly available, please? I know that there's a bit of concern with the, you know, I'm happy for it to be taken on notice too. I apologise if it's been asked like this.
Through, Mr Mayor, we know there's the manhole there which has popped a number of times in recent years. We are engaging consultants to do some more flood modelling of the pipeline that leads through to there. We haven't, we've engaged for the report to be done, work hasn't commenced yet. We certainly can inform Alderman on the outcome of the report, which we will advise of the neighbours adjacent that area specifically when we receive the information. But it could be still a couple of months before we get that information.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Alderman Ewington, any questions? Councillor Von, Alderman Von Berta? Councillor Alderman von Berta?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, through you to the general manager. This follows on from a question that I asked on the twenty fifth of July of this year in relation to the Little Harrow Beach Park and the access to the beach. The answer at the time, when I asked if there was a short term possibility of an access, was that there wasn't an easy or affordable option to doing that. Can you, Mr General Manager, let us know if there's been any further updating in relation to the possibility of a short term ramp? My understanding is that there's been deliberations with another Alderman. And I'm just wondering where things are at with that.
To you?
Thank you for the question, Alderman von Berta. Through you, Mayor, I've had discussions with several Aldermen and the mayor about this issue. You're absolutely right, my advice in July was that there was no cheap option in respect to remedying that ramp. That was in the context that not only is the bottom of the ramp difficult to make DDA compliant, the ramp itself cannot be made DDA compliant. So, in the context of that discussion at the time, my advice was that there was no easy solution for an accessible ramp, which was what was being sought. I amended that advice last week after a lot of discussion with various elected members and others within council. On the basis that if one accepts that the ramp that exists there now is not a DDA access ramp, it is simply a ramp, then there may be some latitude to do, to upgrade the access at the bottom, provided everyone accepts that that will not be a DDA access either. And that could be done as a short term solution. So, there's a fair degree of compromise in there in terms of what's achievable in the short term, with the view towards the longer term being the master plan for the area, which will absolutely include a DDA access, probably at another location towards the end of the beach where the gradients are a lot shallower. So, at this point in time, I'm expecting to receive advice on two or three options probably by the end of this week or early next week. And once I have that, I'll circulate that for information.
Thank you. I have a second question, Mr Mayor. And once again, I believe it's to the general manager. Could you advise if there's been any progress on reopening the ground floor of the Almers Activity Centre?
Through you, Mayor, I might ask Mr Tui whether he's got any update on that because I'm certainly not aware of anything, but that doesn't mean to say it's, it doesn't mean some discussion.
Mr Tui?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'm not aware of any formal written request to use the ground floor of Almers. I am aware that we have been approached by another organisation about the possible usage of that for a short term. But I'm not aware of it having progressed further than just a general conversation.
Thank you.
Mr Mayor, I have a supplementary in relation to that.
Yeah, please go ahead.
What has happened in relation to our interaction with the Department of Education in relation to the use of the ground floor?
Thank you. I have corresponded on at least two occasions with the Department of Education and haven't received a response back indicating an interest in, from them in taking that over.
Alderman James?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to refer to a question that was asked by Alderman Pearce in relation to pipe clay esplanade. And firstly, I'd like to seek some, a response from Mr Graham following my telephone conversation with him on Friday, when he said that he was in the vicinity of pipe clay esplanade and would go and inspect it, and he's actually acknowledged that this evening, that he did. So, at the time, I think, Mr Graham, you advised that there was going to be a discussion with the building supervisor or the operations manager up at the depot. And that was to take immediate action, Mr Mayor, to have some grading and pothole restitution, if that's the word, because they don't last that long, or actually being filled. So, my question is, is that immediate action that you did suggest in our telephone conversation on Friday going to happen? And you have had a discussion with the manager of operations at the depot and that we can expect a grader and some other activity happening early next week?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I don't believe I responded with immediate action. I have received the information from the manager of operations. I haven't had a chance to address that yet. Once I've had a chance to have a look at that this week. Because if the road is continually wet, we can't put the grader through there. So, it needs to be appropriate conditions for the grader. But once I have that information, I'll be trying to get a briefing out to Alderman this week in terms of what we're looking at in terms of addressing the potholes.
My second question through you, Mr Mayor, to the general manager, Mr Nelson. Mr Nelson, we had had discussions tonight in relation to Pass Road and a motion was carried in relation to allocating funds for that project in the twenty three, twenty four. So, my question is in relation to the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was in a sort of a carryover from our budget discussions that was identified as being there in limbo. So, my question is in relation to whether or not that nine hundred and sixty thousand and as part of any process could be redirected to, towards the coastal management plan as a situation that we are eagerly awaiting the consultants' report.
I think I'll take that question and simply say it's a matter for councillor Alderman James. Councillor Lauren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I have two questions. The first one is regarding a food permit for an open garden at Targo Bay on the fifteenth of October. I understand that this particular event has been running for some years, perhaps ten years. And this is, maybe having a food permit or not having a food permit was an oversight. But I wondered, and they have now applied for such a thing, I wondered what flexibility there is within our financial records to perhaps provide an exemption for charities. So, through you to the appropriate officer, which is probably Mr Tui. Do we have discretion or in that area?
Well, it seems as though the G M's keen to answer this, I'll be able to give it to you.
Given that it's a delegation's question, in some circumstances, and I'd need to take it on notice to be certain about it, in some cases, the fee schedule provides me a delegation to exercise that discretion for not-for-profit organisations and charities. So, I'd have to make sure it applies to that particular fee.
Thank you for that.
If I could just clarify something there, there's no room for an exemption for the permit, but there might be for the fee, I'll take it that's where you're going.
The fee, exactly. I beg your pardon, the financial aspect of the permit.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that. And my second question is one on a code of conduct issue. And I seek your advice. I've been contacted by a number of residents over the last forty eight hours, at least four people, expressing concern over a social media post on Facebook by a current Alderman and a response to that by another Alderman who's seeking reelection. And my question is, what is the process for a member of the public to raise a code of conduct issue? And is there any cost associated with that?
Thank you for the question, there is a process. And that commences with the complainant filling out a declaration form. It's available on our website. And that needs to be accompanied by any evidence and satisfy the other requirements of the act, such as what attempts have been made to remedy the situation, that sort of thing, excuse me. And the fee that's associated with that is eighty five dollars. So, the fee is part of the validation process for making a complaint.
With frivolous allegations?
Yes, essentially.
And the fee is refundable if the charge goes ahead and it's upheld?
That's interesting to know, the fee is refundable if the charge is upheld. So, a supplementary, if four people, for example, were to make the same complaint, could they do that on a joint application and split the fee four ways?
Yes, sorry, the issue is about the application coming in, not many, how many people support it. I think it takes a form essentially, or part of it as a statutory declaration. So, that might have some complexity to it. But essentially, you can have, you can have multiple people making the same complaint or you can have individuals making multiple complaints about the same thing. So, choose your poison.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to resume our business as a planning authority and deal with item seven point two. There has been a, sorry? There has been an alternative motion circulated, foreshadowed by, I think, Alderman Blomley. Do I have a second for that motion, please?
Proceedually, I think we need to withdraw the motion that is currently on the floor. The risk you run is that, sorry, the question before the floor, that that motion has not been voted on or withdrawn. I would suggest that the opening gambit is for me to withdraw that motion.
Well, if you feel so, you're able to do that?
Just, very quick, my explanation, Mr Mayor, the problem is that, that question having been put or that motion having been moved away from, should this motion fail, you won't be able to bring it back.
I'll take your point.
So, I seek leave to withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Walker, are you happy to withdraw it? If not, I'll put it?
I don't have the spectrum of a motion at that level, but if I'm comfortable with that, of course.
Okay, on the basis of the move and the second, I've put it, I'll accept that rather than putting it to a procedural vote and accept an alternative motion from Alderman Blomley. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I appreciate assistance of colleagues in getting to this position this evening. So, the new, or the motion before the chair now, Mr Mayor, as has been circulated, is that the development application for two multiple dwellings at eighteen Lowling Court, Gilston Bay, be approved subject to the following conditions and advice as provided in the handout. And there's some reasonings provided there as well, Mr Mayor. But as we are aware, Mr Mayor, from the report, this DA involves a proposal to build two multiple dwellings, an associated driveway and parking areas. And the proposed dwelling units would each be double storey in parts and single storey in others, reflecting the topography of the site. And part of the reasons there, it is provided that the proposal's discretion provides in excess of the minimum ground level private open space. As we're told on page sixty five of our report, Mr Mayor, the public open space is predominantly located in the southwest for unit one and south and southwest for unit two. And as a result of this strange shape of the block and the actual design of the two dwellings, the units do protrude beyond the building envelope on both the northern and southern side boundaries. And therefore, that's why we're now seeking the discretion, to exercise our discretion here. And I note that there is, part of the reasons were, also, Mr Mayor, number two, was there was no unreasonable loss of amenity to adjoining properties. Well, that's because there is no adjoining property at this time. So, and the report is authored in such a way to, as we ought to, give due consideration to the future neighbours as well. But, Mr Mayor, having looked at the, looked at the site, and I know there's been significant interactions between Mr Lovell's planning staff and the proponents. And we heard this evening from Mr Visacoli that the design for unit two is for two bedrooms. But, sorry, it would, that, for two bedrooms, but they were reasoning with for three bedrooms, is that correct, Mr Lovell, other way around? Yep, three, all right, yep, thank you. But if it was two, it would have been, would have been ticked off, potentially. Yeah, yeah, so basically, they're wanting another bedroom here. And also, there's the issue of the living room window of unit two being less than one metre from the shared driveway. Mr Mayor, on balance, I'm of the very strong view that this development application ought to be approved and hence the alternate motion here this evening. And I look forward to the consideration, the debates from colleagues.
Thank you, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank Alderman Blomley for clarifying the situation in relation to the size of these developments. I think there was a number of us that actually went there and not only spoke to the proponents, but also obviously visited the site and had a good look at it. And it's an interesting area because some years ago, this was basically, there wasn't any houses there. And of course, now it's flourishing, you know, the buildings are going up. And it's at a rate, at a pace that is great for Clarence because obviously there are people that want to build and live in Clarence and enjoy the amenity. This particular location is actually in an area where there is one resident or one building immediately next to that proposed development. And it was by chance that that particular person came out to discuss a boundary alignment, a fence matter with the proponents as, and the question was asked basically, and I was basically away from that discussion, but it seemed as though there were no objections. And of course, in relation to this proposal, there were no representations, Mr Mayor. And that seems to be an interesting factor, given that there was no problem in relation to the adjoining land. And therefore, it would appear that if you're looking down the track as to development on that adjoining vacant block, that there would be consideration, I would have thought, for a development to occur there, which would be in keeping with the proponent that's, that's being, that the development that's being proposed at the moment. So, look, I think this is a good proposal. And it is a nature of where development can continue to be progressed in that area. But having, if council agrees to approve this this evening, then it will provide some other accommodation for some young families to be able to live in that area. And also to any development on the other vacant area of the lot. That would obviously be dependent upon what this development can be achieved. So, I seek council support.
Thank you. Other speakers? Councillor Walker?
Thank you. A couple of questions, page sixty eight, and this is probably through you to Mr Lovell. Page sixty eight, point B, providing separation between dwellings on adjoining properties. It talks there about the setbacks and, you know, say that one ranges from basically nothing to five point seven metres with a median amount. It's also noted that, it's noted that these are single dwelling developments. Is there a reason why that's noted? I mean, I think that there isn't anything specific that sets out that development there has to be of a single nature?
Mr Mayor, we're being asked, I think, why we're referring to the separations. The performance criteria B asks for comparison of the, of the separations on adjoining properties by, to give a comparison.
And the relevance of the single dwelling versus multiple dwelling aspect?
Not sure what point you're trying to make here.
I'm just getting an inference that it could be read when it's noted that these are single dwelling developments, that there's a, you know, just on a read of that, people may be assuming that there is some sort of covenant or some sort of, you know, expectation that only single dwellings will be building this on these sites. And I don't think that that is in any way the case.
Well, that's what you're confirming, but I sense that we're getting close to drawing an officer into the debate.
Okay, all right. At risk of doing so again, it was mentioned before that it was likely that a two-bedroom development would have resulted in a recommendation of approval.
And I'm just wondering, leading on from that, that were this motion tonight, this alternate motion not to be accepted, what amount of work might be required through a, what we call, I was going to use the word consultation.
I think you're taking us into a hypothetical region here, Council Walker.
It'd be interesting to know, when, often there's the opportunity for two parties to discuss things and mediate an outcome. And I guess I'm wondering, is this beyond the scope of mediation in that setting?
Well, I think in this setting, where we're confronted with a recommendation, we have to make a, not a recommendation, a motion, and we need to make a decision. We need to deal with the facts before us, rather than hypothesise about what else it might be.
Well, look, it is, it's a rather difficult situation when you've basically got a motion that comes before you with very short notice. And there's a lot to work through. And you may read some of these points and think that they are quite compelling, but you may not have time to sort of work through slowly and find out what the ramifications and defensibility might be of those. It is not, it is a very subpar situation for a planning authority that we have to be dealing with. So I've, you know, with not a lot of time and scope, I'm having to try and synthesise the information here and make a decision, and it is not optimal. And might I say also, that if we pass this motion as it is, it's going to be good times, because it's 7.1, which was actually the development application for Buchanan Street. So we'll approve two 7.1s. There seems to be a sensible resolution within the grasp, which is a two-bedroom development. And we seem constrained within the shackles of what a planning scheme allows you to do to try and get to that outcome. And we have a workaround put before us, laid in the piece, and this is pretty far from ideal.
Council Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm struggling with this, and I'll be honest about it. And the reason I'm struggling is the private open space. This motion doesn't talk about that at all. And it doesn't talk about the issues that are brought up in the original motion. And you talk about the fact that these are two, three-bedroomed houses potentially for a family. And yet, in the report, it talks about the fact that the private open space for unit two is steep and not conducive for dining, relaxation or children's play. It talks about putting windows which have a transparency of no more than 25%. You couldn't watch kids through someone with a transparency of no more than 25% along that window. It talks about the private open space for unit one not having any sunlight in the winter. So for me, I've got real concerns about approving these, knowing that these two houses won't have any adequate private open space for them. If you seriously want to put children in there, you need somewhere for them to be able to get out and play. So unless I can find a really compelling argument, I'm going to struggle to support this.
Thanks, Council Chong, other speakers? We'll take Alderman Burtah and then Alderman Newington.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I'm not struggling at all not to support this. It's very infrequent, or infrequent, perhaps not very, that our officers recommend refusal. And I seem to remember similar situation in Lindsford, where the officers recommended refusal. And I agree entirely with the officer's report and the recommendations. And I believe that Alderman Chong has summarised very well the issues in relation to this particular development. I won't be supporting the alternative motion.
Thank you, Alderman Newington.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I mean, obviously, this is a bit of a tricky one, you know, the planning scheme, it's very tall order to expect that a planning scheme can define and explain and justify and come up with a way of dealing with every variation that's on every piece of land and every design and every wanting that someone wants to do out there. You know, it's obviously in this situation, there's been a bit of a compromise because of drainage issues, the topography of the land. So, and all those sort of injury-related issues that government are making those decisions. But I mean, I can do a pretty simple one, is that, you know, I mean, this is, you know, ultimately, if the proponents don't like the result, they have the opportunity to go through the planning commission, I encourage them to do that. If they don't get the result that they want here, and then it's up to them to make that decision ultimately, which it is with every other decision that we make. But I mean, look, you know, the public open space issue, I mean, you know, there's plenty of houses that have got very minimal backyards in them that we've approved or we can find all around the city. I mean, look, someone going into this house would choose to do so, it's their right to not buy it if they don't like it. And if it suits someone's lifestyle or someone is happy to have that. But I think, you know, because of the constraints on this particular piece of land, I think the proponents have tried very hard to come up with something that they think will work best with what's available. You know, there's a pretty decent sporting complex down the road, there's some bush up the back. You know, there's other ways to probably get the access to some public open space other than expecting to have a big backyard. I think that concept is not what we should hang our hat on in every situation here. But, look, ultimately, I'll support this motion, I think it's a good compromise. And if it gets up, well, the majority wins, so we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Alderman Newington, other speakers? Council Molder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. These are awkward things. But I just refer council to some very recent ones. The 87 flats that we approved on Kangaroo Bay Boulevard. They had a communal open space, which is not private open space, it's actually limited public. It's not for the particular dwelling zone, it was a collective thing in the middle of the ground. And the arguments then made by the planning staff for approval, despite the fact that balconies were supposed to be 50 square metres, but, oh, no, 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 that's not an absolute standard now, that's because, that can, that's variable. We underwonder sometimes why you have an absolute standard to aim at. And here you have some apartments, and these apartments, sorry, this development here has very small private open space. So I just wonder sometimes why, when it becomes to luxury apartments on Kangaroo Bay Boulevard, it's okay not to have private open space. But when it comes down here, we're going to say, no, you can't have it, because you may or may not want to move a family in. Well, if you wanted to move a family into one of those things, and you didn't like the size of the backyard, then you'd go and rent something else, or you'd buy something else. So, I mean, I'm a little bit torn here about the fact that fundamentally, there is one element here, and that is that there were no representations. The people in the surrounding community did not see a problem with this. So it's one of the few areas that council has a discretion, because our decision cannot be appealed because there were no representatives. So that is the fundamental thing. So, you know, I take it on board, but if we're going to be consistent, and if private open space doesn't mean anything, then this is fine. And it's not that there isn't any, it's just it may not be sufficient. But that in the end is what the markets do. So although I am vexed by these interpretations, I think the fact that there was no community representations to me is the underlying one.
Other speakers? Alderman Pearce?
I wasn't even ready yet.
Oh, you got my attention, Alderman Pearce, so you did something right. However, we're just moving to Council Warren.
Yeah, like my colleagues, I'm struggling a little bit with this one. It doesn't affect the neighbours, any neighbours building in the future will be able to take it into account. But we do have the planning scheme for a reason. It doesn't comply with the setbacks. I appreciate the trouble the proponents have gone to, to build some, or to design something that complies with the bowel and the flooding requirements, which are really important. And they've had to make adjustments for that reason. I wonder if this is close to, there could be another further compromise with the setbacks. And then I would certainly have no issues with it all. My concern with saying, oh, well, we won't worry about the setbacks, is that we're actually setting a precedent for the rest of the street, for those undeveloped blocks. And saying that we don't actually care about the planning scheme. And sometimes I really don't care about the planning scheme, it's very problematic. And in fact, there's been a bit of discussion in the media in the last couple of days about taking the planning authority away from councils and making us a central body. And I think that it's absolutely essential that as councils, we get to decide on matters that are close to us. Because I think if there was a central body, we wouldn't have half a dozen councillors going out and looking at the property and making those assessments. And I think that's a really valid and important role that we play. And I apologize that I didn't get to see this particular development. So, yeah, struggling, do have that concern about setbacks. Appreciate comments about public open space, that, but again, it's, you know, a criteria of the planning scheme, either it matters or it doesn't. So, yeah, still listening to the debate.
Thank you. Callum Pearce?
Thank you, Mayor. I went and had a look at this, and look, to be perfectly honest, if I was designing this, I would have done it slightly differently. Look, when I went there, I thought, jeez, you know, I find it, you know, I do feel sorry for the people that are actually building it, because, jeez, they've got a steep block and there's a lot of downsides. But as people said, the one thing that is always in the back of my mind, that there was no objections. And that's always, and I think, that's a positive. I can, the area is developing, and as I say, the people next door had every chance to object, and they didn't. It is a growing area, I mean, there was a lot of work going on when I was here, a lot of builders there doing work on various blocks. So I think it's certainly a growing area. Look, I'm like Alderman Warren, I've really struggled with this one, I really have. When I first saw it, I didn't like it. But, you know, I always agree that when there's no objections, you've probably got to give a bit of leniency, you know, along the lines.
Thank you. Alderman Blomley, you're right of reply.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to thank colleagues for their contributions this evening. It's not ideal to have it on the fly, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for your willingness to entertain this alternate motion this evening. There is, with regards to the public open space, there is, the site does provide, a plan provides in excess of the minimum required, we know that. And it's been raised by a number of speakers this evening, it's because of the topography and the design of the building. Is it 100% idea what we'd like? No, it's not. But I think if you look at the size, the shape of the block, and the actual dwellings that they're wanting to put there, it's probably the best possible outcome. The planning staff, our planning staff do a top job, Mr Mayor, they really do. And they have a planning scheme that they follow to the letter of the law. They do, and they do that really well. Their job is to advise us, our job is to decide based on advice. And based on there being no objections this evening, that is why, that's one of the main reasons, as well as the other reasons listed here, why I was keen to move this alternate motion. I thank colleagues for their contributions and urge them to support this sensible recommendation.
So the motion before the chair is for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried, and that concludes our business as a planning authority.
Mr Mayor, could that, just with respect, could that be, number be changed to 7.2? Thank you.
Didn't you change it, Charles?
I suggested it should be changed.
I knew there was a suggestion.
I accepted that last adjustment as a rule.
I'm sure that our minutes, minutes second people will be on. That brings us to the close of this open council meeting. So if I could ask you to close the floor and thank our two members of the public that have joined us tonight. Thank you.